Hey there, how are you?
Welcome everyone. If you can please take your seats now and feel free to get beverages and refreshments and we will begin our meeting. Just a few reminders before we start. Please silence your cell phones and if you get an important call feel free to step outside so that we don't disturb others while you're on your phone. Additionally, if you are not already on the part-time residence email distribution list, please sign up at, there's a clipboard on the table at the back of the room. We have a lot of important announcements that we have coming up, so we'd like to make sure that you get them. And one last reminder, today is the last day for public comment on the Town of Snowmass Village Comprehensive Plan. And so if you haven't already made any comments, please go on the town website and make those comments because today is the last day. Now that we are all settled, I'd like to formally welcome you on behalf of the Part-Time Residence Advisory Board. My name is Debbie Cote and I'm the Chair of the Board. To my right is Tim Singletary, he's also on the Board. And to my left is Joyce Schenk and she too is on the Board. We have a few other members that are attending via Internet and I welcome them too. And anyone else who is attending via Internet. But at this time, I'd like to get to our several very exciting speakers that we have on the agenda tonight. And also just so that everyone knows, after each speaker, we will have a short Q and A, about five to 10 minutes. If you have a question, just raise your hand or come to the mic and we will call you accordingly. At this point, please allow me to introduce the Honorable Mayor, Markie Butler. She will be, she will be giving us some town updates, talking also about the marijuana moratorium, status of review, the base village, building six, and the status of the mall sale. Thank you, Markie.
It's always interesting. You think I know everything there is to know. What I think I've learned is I know very little, but I do know quite a few things. As always, it's a pleasure to welcome everyone here. It's good to see everyone up here on the Board. And to those who are listening at home or watching at home, welcome. Well, I think that it finally started snowing.
Yay.
It didn't stop.
It didn't stop. I go to Florida and y'all get snow. But anyway, it's wonderful to be back out on the slopes and enjoying the beautiful skiing. Travis prepared some notes for me and wherever he is. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much Travis. He tells me we have plowed 52 inches of snow in February. I think it's more of where I live, I'm far away, but anyway, it could be more, but I don't know, but it's a heck of a lot of snow. Now, we need snow, so I want you all to do the snow dance that I've encouraged all of you to do. And I will tell you what it is, but you can call a former council member that lives over near where Sally lives. His name was Jack and he was on Picken County. Uh huh, I was going to say his name, but you don't want to, you don't want to know what his snow dance is. So, you know, we still have a lot of fun here, trying to laugh and have a good time. The sad news is that it has hurt some of our businesses. And if you watch Channel 7 News this morning, they commented about SkiCo having to have everybody take two weeks of vacation right at the end of the season. I didn't like to see that on the Denver channels. I think everybody at the end of the season needs to take a break, particularly this year. SkiCo's done a beautiful job. Lodging taxes, okay, you always like to hear how are we doing financially? For 2016, lodging tax was up 4.44 percent. Don't know, we were up to 4.44 percent over 2016. 2017, probably quite well. I'm looking forward to seeing the new numbers that will be coming out soon from the town. Sales tax finished up 5.1 percent over 2016. What I learned was when people, the skiing wasn't that good, they went out shopping. What a concept. We love credit card sales. I don't know, there's this building, some building going up across the street. Have you noticed? Yes, Building Six, that's to be a community, community-owned building by Snowmass Village. We will be seeing the final proposal for a flexible performing arts and community space for Building Six. It's called Building Six. Beautiful design. We won't see that until the council meeting on the 12th. Please know, I expect all of you to please write comments. If you look at that March 12th meeting, we've got to make a very tough decision about Building Six. What we thought we were going to have there in terms of an Ice Age Discovery Center, unfortunately the cash was not there for them to do the fundraising. And secondly, then we thought we might see ACES and that kind of fell apart. So we're looking at accommodation program that would include grassroots and another partnership on a flexible performing arts space. There's a restaurant bar, of course, going in, you've got to have food, you've got to have drink, and these types of place. We've redesigned the top floor of that building in order to better serve food and what have you, and drink in the restaurant that will be up on the higher level. And it's Snowmass Nexus, if you haven't been following town information, please look for Snowmass Nexus and it'll give you a sense of what we're talking about. Please send comments. Council is very divided on Building Six. Then there's this thing in Colorado called marijuana. We did do a community questionnaire. I have asked Travis to be prepared to present the results, if you want to see a little overview of what council saw. We saw it in a work session. Four council people were there. It's somewhat divided in council. I need everyone's feedback as we continue to vet this issue. I've asked the Marketing and Tourism Board to really weigh in on this particular topic. And what we learned is where people are as a conflict in values and message from our town as we move forward with marijuana consideration. And let alone who we've been known to be for years and years and years as a conflictual with our town values, our marketing strategy would be kid-friendly. And if you have pot shots, how do you put that, couch that within a town friendly? I use the analogy, I recently was down at the marketplace at Disney World. And I think when I come back here all the time, that this is such a kid-friendly resort just as Disney World is. And yes, we're not Disney, we're not owned by Disney. But the point is, this is a playground for the very young. And I always ask my question, what would Walt Disney do? Who was one of my heroes, child heroes. So we had 540 responses. I want to thank every one of our part-time homeowners. 172 of you responded. I will share with you, I listen very carefully to the part-time homeowners. It was more negative on this particular issue versus positive. And it was resounding. So please keep up the good work. I think you know where I stand on it right now. I'm a nurse, I know when it's appropriate to use certain drugs. And think about it from the perspective, if you have guests coming with children, your grandchildren, passing on the legacy of the uniqueness of Snowmass Village, that is how I'm framing my decision-making process. And I'm not focused on the money that I bring to Snowmass Village. It's more about what's the legacy of our community. Comprehensive Plan, thank you Debbie for reminding everyone, please get your comments in. We will be seeing an abbreviated version, the Town Council will, starting Monday, of what we're doing with the Comprehensive Plan. It's a very long document, I think it's 189 pages. I'm a believer, if we can't say something within seven pages, we shouldn't say it for plan, but we're trying to get abbreviated versions with some appendix. It really, this is a critical document. It advises this town as we look at future development of economic sustainability, et cetera. It is a guiding document and one that we've used for years and years and years. It was part of the original draft back in 2006 and this will be a revision to everything we've been doing. Public hearing will occur later this year, so we'll get the comments in. We incorporate people's comments and thoughts and then we're going to do another round on the writing and then of course we'll do a public session. So please watch for that. The more participation, again, the better we have in terms of a guiding document for our town. Just a few other things that are coming. DAV Sports Clinic, I think most of you know, the Disabled American Vets are coming and they've come for years and years, it's 18 years now. You received a letter of support for this wonderful program. You should have, if not, we'll be glad to send you one because we're asking for money at sponsorships to bring some of these young men and women and our aging veterans into Snowmass for a wonderful, wonderful week of skiing and sledding and Alpine and cross-country and ski shooting and all kinds of things and they love it. One of the hardest, last month was one of my hardest months as being mayor. And I know I'm going to cry. Joe Coffey, who served as our Housing Director for 38 years, passed away. I had the honor of being at his bedside more than once as hospice person, provider. And also with the honor of being the mayor that presented him with a mayor proclamation, proclaiming the first day of powder we have every year will be Joe Coffey Day up on the mountain. We'll figure out how we're going to do the flag for the Joe Coffey Epic Day, haven't figured that one out. Because I didn't know if we were going to have powder, ever. And he would have loved all that powder. I tell you, it started snowing after he died. So he was floating around, just making it snow. And it was wonderful for him to send us that wonderful tribute of great snow. But also, on the other hand, what's more important is the legacy that Joe left in our town for employee housing. It is tremendous, our employee housing program. We just need more employee housing. To be able to house our wonderful employees that work in our village. So the next housing development, and we've got one on the docket and one we're looking at, it will be named Coffey's Place in honor of Joe Coffey. It's a wonderful tribute. Unfortunately, when Joe died, the town moves on. His memories will never be forgotten, not by many people in this town whose life, life he touched and lives he touched. I've heard more stories than I, I can't even tell you the number of employees that have come up to me and told me stories about how Joe Coffey would come over and sit in their living room or find a new apartment for them as their family began to grow. He was all about taking care of his residents. So we've moved on now and we have a new Housing Director come to fill Joe's shoes. I'm not sure they're ever fillable, but Betsy Crum comes to us from Hartford, Connecticut. She's got 35 years of experience. So she brings a breadth of experience, a wealth of knowledge, and we're going to open our arms and greet her very, very soon in our town. And that's about all I have right now. Is there any questions? April the 2nd. So she'll be here sooner than you think. And then by then, we have two weeks until the mountains close. What's with that? Okay, any questions?
I do have one question for you. Could you just briefly let us know if there's been any update on the mall sale situation?
I hear so many rumors. No.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Does anybody know something I don't know?
You mentioned that you had two employee housing projects on the horizon.
One, one for sure.
One for sure. Where's that going to be and how many employees are you looking at?
Oh boy, you're asking me questions and I'm going to have to ask Travis. I could tell you where it is. It's down by our employee housing units as you enter Snowmass Village, down by the rec center and going into Rodeo Place.
And we actually have all of the details for that project on our website. So if you go to TSV.com, under Housing Opportunities, one of the tabs is called Rodeo Place. Sure. Rose can kind of show you where that's at.
So it's before the houses in Horse Ranch?
You would, yes, you would turn up Horse Ranch Drive as you go in and go by the rec center and that very first right that goes to the rodeo housing and then on up to, it's between, you'll see it as we bring it up. It's down.
Government?
Government?
Departments?
Housing. Oh, Charles, you don't make this website easy. Housing.
Housing Opportunities on the left-hand side. Rodeo Place, Phase 3.
So, yeah. Lots of details there.
If you go back up, Rose, I'm sorry. That site map right there, so a good chunk of that Lot C to the west, I'd say the second half of it is no longer included in the project.
Where the horses used to be.
No, the horses will still be there. It's on the right-hand side as you go into Horse Ranch.
Right.
So that's the horse ranch.
Oh, I see, oh, got it.
Yeah. Because the pasture, that is a whole different purpose.
So Lot C all the way across is not part of it?
Correct.
So if you're, if you are a resident up in Horse Ranch, there was some concern, we did have, we did have some consideration to also put some housing over where that first red large rectangle is. And that's now off the table, isn't it, Travis?
For the most part, yes.
Yes, okay.
Say half of that rectangle is now off the table.
Yeah, it's about, yeah, it's about right there. And the number of units that we're looking at?
I don't know.
It's probably right in here somewhere. 25?
It was, it was 24, I think that's gone down to like 16.
Triplexes, single-family units, two-unit types, you know, side-by-side town homes, three bedrooms. It's more for family.
This is all, I mean, very much conceptual at this point. We're still going through the comp plan and all of that study first, but this is a potential site and probably our next likely development.
Okay, it looks like there are no questions. I thank you so much, Mayor, for being here. Yes, unfortunately I have to slip out, I got some phone calls, I got a mic. No, thank you very much. But first, thank you so much again. Our next presenters are here from the Animal Control and they are going to talk about the spring trail closures due to wildlife and the bears in the Town of Snowmass Village. Please welcome Tina White and Lori Smith from Animal Control. Thank you.
Do you need to use the computer?
I can drive.
You can do it?
Yeah.
Are we just going to point at you? As you wish.
Can you hear, hear okay if I just stand here?
I need a mic.
Sorry, you have to use a mic for the broadcast.
Practice your lounge act.
Be here every Thursday.
Testing, testing. Does it work? You can hear? Thanks you guys for having us, that was a pleasure. I'm Tina and this is Lori and we are the animal services for Snowmass Village and we work for the police department. We're going, we had some questions about what happened last year with the bears and we're going to briefly touch on that and why there was an elevation of bear calls and bear encounters. And then we're going to move right into also another important part of the village and that's the Wildlife Protection Closure.
And we're psyched to talk to you guys because you guys have ownership on the open space and the wildlife in your backyard. And we have two, we have some of the prime black bear habitat in the whole entire state here in Snowmass Village. So we have the Aspen Zone on the wood road, faraway side. It's a really wet environment. Even the aspen trees themselves grow catkins, which is a food for bears. On the opposing side, the Horse Ranch Sinclair Meadow side, we have all the mountain shrubs, which is the fall food for the bears. And it's not just food, it's crops. It's massive food that's going to get them through hibernation. So it's service berry, choke cherry and gamble oak. And we have developed all within their food source. Their food is not at higher elevation and that's why we need to coexist with bears here in the village.
So last year was just a good example. We did have a food crop failure, so we had a large increase in bear calls all over the valley and in the village. We had a lack of moisture and then early blooming and then you get a frost, a late frost will destroy some of the crops. So Snowmass Village is bear-proofed pretty well. A lot of kudos to the village and its members because we haven't had to have a bear euthanized in years and they euthanize like 20 to 30 bears in, around us. Within seven miles, they're putting down that many bears. Snowmass Village has not. I credit the, you know, owners, guests and the town for having that ownership. They did access homes, there were unlocked windows, unlocked doors, we call it an open invitation. Once they've gone in, they come back. Once they've gotten food, they come back and come back. That was what was happening last year. They seemed like, oh, they were aggressive, they were really close, they didn't, they weren't scared of us. When they have a food failure, they are willing to tolerate humans more. And so they will get closer in close proximity and be in the homes and around the homes more because they're highly tolerant because they're trying to get to a food source. So injuries don't escalate when we have a lot of bear interactions, just so you know that, so.
And this is a home in Snowmass Village. When, when we get something like this, there are bird feeders full outside drawing the bear in and they smell that from a long way away. That's a huge attractant for bears. There's usually trash left outside. It brings the bear to the windows of your home and then there's windows cracked open and people gone. Again, bears show incredible tolerance with people. When they are coming into a kitchen, they're all about food. So if they enter in your basement window, they're going directly to your kitchen and they smell where the food is, they get the food and they leave. If they hear you, they usually leave. That being said, if you come around a corner and scare a bear, there could be an injury. But what we're trying to do is get residents to take responsibility. So when you're not home, you have to keep things not only closed but locked. And this is a kitchen remodel, I mean, this is a $20,000 kitchen remodel.
So we get a couple of questions and the first one is, well, I have a bear, it keeps coming back to my home, keeps bothering the guests, why don't you relocate it? Well, that doesn't stop the learned behavior. They've already figured out that they can go to windows, doors, cars and get food or go to camps and humans and get food. They also have an incredible homing instinct and they, we have seen this before, we've had bears relocated and they will go miles and literally show up within days back here in the village. They can get killed along the way and they do. There's highways they're crossing, they're going through uncharted territories and into other bear territories. And so if they don't die on the way, they, they make it home, they come back.
People also say, well, can't you take that to a wildlife rehabber and have the bear rehabbed? Well, you know, if you look at this picture, the rehabbers work really hard at their job and they're very passionate, but they've got bears in cages, they've got to feed those bears with whatever food they can come up with. It could be dog food, it could be apples, fruit from the market. So that food has human scent, it's being brought to the bear. The bear is a foraging animal, so it's getting some service berry here, some choke cherry here, getting in the acorns, it's moving all the time, it's feeding all the time. And the sow bear teaches those cubs, this is where you find this, this is where you get the catkins from, the aspen. So when we bring food to bears in a cage and then Division Wildlife will take those bears out in the winter, put them in a in the winter, put them in a man-made den, cover it with snow and hope that those bears come out in spring and become, uh, natural foraging bears. The truth is, is, um, you know, it may work in a percentage of the time, but these two bears from Snowmass Village ended up going to a ranch and one of them was shot at a ranch. So it came out of the den, one got shot at a ranch and one went to a feed store down in Glenwood Springs. So this isn't something we wanna do unless we're absolutely have no other options.
So we live in bear country. Black bears live around us. Um, we, being all of us, can help them survive the changes. We have a lot of changes. I'm sure you're seeing it every time you visit or come here. Um, we just need to be willing to change our habits, be diligent, teach our guests, teach our family, teach ourselves and remind each other to lock windows and doors and clean up the cars, um, from refuse. And then just try to embrace this and be proud of this. So we're gonna move on to the, another part of this, uh, and it's the closures and the importance of our closures.
Right now in, uh, behind Horse Ranch is the north rim trail and the whole area that it encompasses. In addition to Sky Mountain Park behind Highline Road, there's a closure from December first to May fifteenth. This is a closure to protect the winter range. So the ungulates, you can see all these elk and this is a photograph from this year. They're up in that area when we leave it alone. We've got gates up. We've got signs up. We do the best we can to educate people. Um, these animals are hundreds of pounds and yet in the winter, they're feeding on bark and brush and twigs. It's called a declining diet. So all winter long, they're not bulking up, right? And then they go into spring and they're birthing. So we give them the peace to survive the winter conditions. They're post-holing through snow. If you get hikers with dogs chasing these elk, they can break a leg and just lay there injured. Um, there's a lot of reasons just to give them the space to survive the winter. I mean, you guys, we have this incredible wildlife resource in our backyard and we wanna protect it.
In the spring, the elk historically move over to the burnt, burnt mountain area. And that is the pines, two creeks, up top Faraway, Wood Road, that whole area. And it's because there's amazing food, there's water, there's protection, there's quiet. And that's what they've historically used for calving grounds. So then we move that way and close that area of recreation and human impact, April twenty-fifth to June twenty-first.
And what's happening with, um, elk calves in the area? And these are statistics that we got from the Colorado Parks and Wildlife. But if you took a hundred cows thirty years ago, half of them would have calves in the spring. Now you take a hundred cows and only a third of them are having calves. So that's a declining trend and one we should be concerned about. There's development. There's recreational pressures. There's a lot of things that could be going into this, but we just need to be aware that they need some of the protections that we're giving them to calve.
So for numerous years, we've had cameras out there, wildlife cameras, and we are documenting a lot of calving going on um, that these animals are using this area and, and using them to, uh, raise their young and get them to a point before they have to start moving on. These are different years and it shows the different, um, areas and having the cows and calves just a good example.
Um, when we close the area for elk calving, these are all pictures you're gonna see from your own backyard. It's incredible what shows up on the camera. We have little cubs of the year. We have big boars like that left-hand picture at the top. Uh, the bottom left is a sow with yearling cubs that are just playing with all our trail tape and signs and tearing things apart. And we had a series of pictures. They're having a grand time out there in the closure. Um, picture after picture of bears moving through using the closure area.
And the next thing is, we were so delighted to realize, um, we did not realize how many moose were getting through. And now that we've got cameras out there and the closed area, the moose are moving through. Um, we're starting to see moose show up in our village. We were tickled to death when we saw that the first few years. Um, we're catching all sorts of wildlife out there. Uh, it's interesting when we see the elk all moving through, then we see mountain lions moving through. And so we're catching some beautiful photos of that. And so there's a lot of species using the closure. What we found is we left the cameras up a few times after we opened it up. And one year, we counted two hundred and twenty-five users on Tom Blake alone. The first day it was open, we got one deer photo in that whole week. The wildlife just moved out. So this is a critical time to allow them this time for quiet and space.
Tina?
Yeah.
On this, uh, is there hunting going on in these areas?
Um, during the closure, no.
The question was, is there hunting going on during the closure?
No, um, no. There is not, no hunting. There's hunting periods. They're up higher and they'll use these trails to access these areas. So, yeah, like you can hunt up on the government trail if you have a permit.
Again, more pictures of wildlife in the closure. The really cool one there is a doe with twin fawns. Recreational pressures are so intense. And if she's coming off that, that doe's coming off the declining diet in winter, then she gives birth to twin fawns, then she's nursing. She's gotta get them up off the ground and moving and away from predators. And we're predators too. So when our noise and our dogs and our movement through that closure is eliminated, we're seeing, um, the, not only the elk calf, but the bear cubs and the, the fawns.
So since the early seventies, they have studied these areas. They've done numerous studies. And this is a protection that's real critical and they've proven it's really needed. Um, we're not just the town saying, oh, we need to close this area. Um, we're in intergovernment agreement with the Forest Service, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, Aspen Ski Company, Picking County, and the town of Snowmass Village. So we're just asking for help, any kind of help that we can get, whether it's policing yourself or asking your, again, friends, neighbors, guests, and family to really respect this area.
We have to close such a vast area that we have to close ski runs. And so when you see us with the tape and the temporary fence posts and the signs across the run, um, please help, uh, let your guests know to respect that. Let your kids know. Respect those closures that are kind of, uh, less usual with, you know, not, without gates, but yet still important.
Um, we're gonna just quickly go over a few examples. We've got, um, users in there. They are going, putting their bikes over the gates, signs on the gates. They're gonna get their run in. They're getting their biking in. Um, these are people coming out of the neighborhood and, um, so we're just gonna go quickly through some of the examples.
This trail runner, um, went through the closed gate at Butterunk because the closure extends all the way from Faraway Road to Buttermilk. He went over probably a half a dozen hard gates and came out in Snowmass Village and, you know, was ignorant to all the wildlife he was flushing and all the calves and the fawns he was affecting and ran all the way through the closure.
And here's an example, uh, bikers actually literally reading the sign that says he could be cited up to five thousand dollars. Um, and he still continued on his bike ride through the closure. Uh, kids went in with the dog and played and played and played in there. We've got them on several cameras. And other people just going right over hard gates and, um, going in several times. We're finding them on the camera numerous times.
Um, we talked about the north rim being closed for winter range. This couple just, uh, not too long ago climbed over that gate. You can see them. Uh, the guys helping the girl climb over and they went for a nice long hours hike up in the closure. When we find these folks in town, because this is kind of a small town, get a ticket.
How much success do you have?
We do have some success.
Yeah. Um, so really what we wanted to point on today is just a reminder that we, if we live here, we own a home here or recreate here, we are so blessed and we are so lucky. And we just need to have that ethics of land stewardship. Um, the act, you know, recreational pressures are high. We're seeing some declines in, um, wildlife. We just need to protect our asset, the environment and the wildlife. It's a vast area and we just wanna keep it for the next generation and for our grandkids and for our great-grandkids to enjoy and, and appreciate this asset that we all are blessed to have.
You can reach us through the police department. We're animal services and trail rangers. Um, this is a group of bull elk. The photos of these guys, um, in the spring in velvet, they're running, they're chasing each other, they're bucking and it's just phenomenal when we step away and give them just a little space. Do you guys have any questions about bears or trail closure?
Can I get you a microphone? I'm sorry. Thank you.
First question, why do you pick June twenty-first? Would it be advantageous to extend it?
Uh, yeah, the only reason that they pushed it back to June twenty-first, it actually extended longer till July first, was that the recreational demands were higher. And so they compromised. It was a compromise for June twenty-first. It really should have gone to July first.
Was that recreational compromise just with the town or with all the entities?
With all the entities.
And the next question is while the, um, elk population is going down, what's happening with the bear population? Is it going up or is it going down?
You know, I think that's a difficult question to answer because the Parks and Wildlife, um, getting population counts on bears isn't the easiest thing to do. So, um, yeah, we don't have an answer on the population.
Yeah, the question was, uh, if there's a ordinance about feeding wildlife or having a salt lick or any kind of enticement. We do have an ordinance. It is against, um, our ordinance to entice or draw or lure wildlife in. We think we're doing them a favor and we're not. We're, we just need to allow them to, um, do what's natural. And we may lose a few, but if they're starving or something, but that's just part of the natural, uh, way of things. And it's just really hard when we see them out there and struggling. We wanna throw them hay or give the foxes food because they're so cute, but it's very detrimental to them in the long run. So definitely call us. You don't need to tell us who you are even, but just give us a lead or a heads up and we'll educate. Our big thing is we just wanna educate and get people on board with us.
You know, that's something we always just, in the spring, we, we, we're always waiting to see, did the service berries start coming on? Are the choke cherries coming on next? Do we have acorns starting to form? And we can never, um, anticipate how that's gonna go. It's kind of, uh, day-by-day, um, observance of the crops.
Okay, oh, do you have one last question? Sure. Let's go with that.
For those of us who don't know, uh, what's the policy in Colorado regarding bear hunting? And is there any habitat around here that's, uh, where it's permitted?
Um, what the question was is the policy in Colorado about bear hunting? Um, there is a fall season. They did do away with the spring hunt. The reason they did away with that is the reality is when they were shooting a bear and claiming they thought it was a boar, they were killing a sow and then you'd have three bears possibly dying because the cubs were suffering and dying. So that just wasn't humane. They now actually harvest more bears in the fall when they have a bear hunt than they did a cum, when they did it together. That's actually a higher number and they give out so many bear permits. And they tend to give them out in areas that need to have a little bit of, you know, some harvesting done, so, yeah.
With that, I'd like to thank you so much for that informative presentation. It was really great. So at this time, we will move on to our next speakers from Eastwood Development. Jordan Sarek and Rob, I know I'm gonna mess this up. Carn Cross, is that more or less correct? Uh, I tried. I tried. And they're gonna tell us a little bit about the proposed upgrades to the town center, which of course are still very much a work in progress with the town council, but, uh, we'll get a little overview of, of the proposal from our guest speakers.
Richard Shaw from Design Workshop is gonna lead us through a quick presentation that will be available for questions.
Super.
We're pleased to be here and to give you a brief introduction about the Snowmass Center and the redevelopment plan that's underway. What I would describe first is the way the town land use process, uh, is organized. It starts with a very conceptual phase called sketch plan. And the Snowmass Center is currently in that level of review, which involves the town council, the planning commission, the town staff, and, uh, a good deal of public interest in what goes on and the public is, uh, very much, uh, part of the process and we want to extend at the very beginning of this presentation that we see this as an opportunity to gain some input and any feedback that you have about the plan that we're organizing at this stage. So the Snowmass Center has been here as long as there is a town. And in fact, the building just down slope of us was undertaken while there was no town here. It occurred with Picking County as incorporation took place. That was the very first project that the town council sitting at that time, um, wanted to try to initiate that because it contained the essential services that a town needs. And we have basically keyed on that original idea in asking the question, what is the right neighborhood here? And we went through a pretty extensive process. So the next slide. The first thing we did was look what we actually have. And while the Snowmass Center has served its purpose well, it is a tired facility. It has not been fully developed as it was originally intended. There was a number of square feet, uh, particularly with the commercial services that never were realized. Uh, consequence to some of that is, is the arrival to the center is the service dock. And there's a number of conflicts in the circulation pattern here at the center that come about because of cars and transit and pedestrians and service vehicles that come together. Here's a photograph that was taken, uh, this last summer as we started to think about the plan. Um, the center is fundamentally a single building with parking lots on the downhill side. And while it doesn't appear to have two levels of parking, it actually does. There's one level of parking that's a full twelve feet below the grade of where the entrance to Clark's Market is. So this is the center today. Eastwood has, uh, done sort of the beginnings of what could take place here in terms of the additional services. And the hardware store that you see here now i- is a great gift to the community. It's something that needed to be here. There was no tenant space to accomplish it. That would be representative of the kind of way we could see both commercial and office space being expanded in a modest way here at the center. So a plan has been developed. It in, uh, entails a number of, uh, buildings, but most importantly, it's based on the idea that this is a local serving area that could have an actual main street incorporated in it. So if you visualize where Clark's Market is today, that is the upper level. So if you visualize where Clark's Market is today, that is the upper level. Much of the parking that we have on the lower level today would be placed in a parking structure below. And in that space that is previously occupied by parking, we have visualized a combination of new mixed uses, including commercial at the ground level, organized around a street and pedestrian space. So shops exposed to the street. The businesses that are hidden away in the center would come out to the face of the street. There would be parking along that street. And we're visualizing it would be a two-way street with parking that would allow people to park for most of the year, very, very close to the business they want to conduct business with. For example, the post office. We see a complement of other residential uses, a combination of both free-market uses and a combination of townhouses or stacked kind of condominium arrangement. And in addition to that, new restricted housing that would be built here in the center. Otherwise, the center would serve its essential use for liquor store, for grocery, for incubator businesses, for the kinds of services and businesses we're all used to being here in the center, but in a more expanded way and offering some brand-new services and businesses that there is currently not space to accomplish. So comprehensive plan tells us a lot about what the vision has been for the site. And we've used this comprehensive plan in its many forms to help us formulate the right program in the future. Commercial heart has spoken about, we want to see this as streets with buildings on either side, that the street has the sense of a real place, that a street like this would be a real builder of community because it has gathering spaces in it. This is an example of an illustration, we are at this early stage where ideas are being discussed. But this is the overall land use and the environment that we hope to create here. A true neighborhood of mixed uses. And some of the uses that we're speaking about would actually be placed where the grocery store in the center is. So we would utilize a large portion of the flat roof to bring in new residential uses in particular. So the main street would have commercial at the ground level, have office and residential at the second, and the third level of the Snowmass Center would have additional residential So to help explain how this would work three-dimensionally, here's the existing use. The commercial is on the ground floor and office above. When we would redevelop the center, we would expect it to form the street, have underground parking for a portion of it, commercial, residential above, and offices on the top of the center itself. So we would see the center being remodeled, updated, incorporate new uses, and in the result of doing that, have a neighborhood that is collected around those uses. And it's a good place for people to be in Snowmass. It's close to the center, the services are here, great transit linkages exist already. And in the word of transit and connectivity, we have actually dedicated a new area for a transit service center. It's the area that is often called the annex, it's the piece of the center that sticks out. It has great convenience to the center. We would propose removing that square footage and in its place, the new transit center. And that center would come from the roundabout, or the transit service from the roundabout in either direction, come in, make a loop and have a very convenient place for people to visually know about transit and to have this connection throughout the rest of the town and in every neighborhood. Because interestingly enough, there is more transit activity here at the center connecting the rest of Snowmass than any other of the routes. So it's important to us to make this connectivity work and we think there are other opportunities to do that with better pedestrian connections as well. So one of the gathering places we're visualizing here connects us to the sun, to the view, to Snowmass as a ski area. It's right in the center, would be across from where Clark's entrance generally is. And it would be an opportunity where new things like coffee shops and a greater offering of restaurants could bring together a great place for the community at large. So that's the summary of the center. We continue to be very interested in working with the community at large to get this neighborhood to be the right neighborhood and to expand the opportunity from what we have today into something that is more interesting, more community-focused, and brings together what the community has wanted, which is a higher degree of self-sufficiency as it relates to the commercial space and new residential opportunities. So we're here to answer questions and again, thank you very much for allowing us to go.
Thank you. Looks like we have a question already?
You're focusing on the Snowmass Center, but in some of your slides, you appear to have considerable residential community that surrounds the center. What is the percentage? If you have a perfect world and it's approved that you can put everything in there that you want, what is the breakdown of commercial versus residential?
We currently have about 53,000 square feet in the center. We would propose to increase the amount of commercial by about 19,000 square feet. So that total would get us into about 70,000 square feet in total of commercial space. That is actually less than was originally approved for the local serving commercial here in Snowmass. And then the residential is represented to be about 61 residential units. And of that, that would tally up to be about 140,000 square feet.
So it's two to one?
It is, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Does the commercial include offices?
Yes.
It does?
It does.
And have you made this presentation available online so residents could take a look at it?
This particular one is not, but the town's website under their active land use section under community development, that website contains all the aspects of the sketch plan application. And it's quite easy to find on the website.
This is different.
Well, this is just an abbreviated presentation for this group, so.
Are you going to completely redo the inside of the first floor of the Snowmass Center now? And if so, are you planning to put a restroom there? Because right now, you have to go up to the second floor to go to the restroom.
Thank you for that comment. We will organize the center differently than it is. Now, the major uses like the grocery store, which was recently remodeled, we intend to have the least impact in the grocery store area and the bigger uses. But the opportunity to improve circulation, to include restrooms, to improve the service dock to a new location, to get tenants which will benefit from the outdoors and the street environment that would be created, those are all the kinds of remodel that we would do with the center.
What are the plans with the post office?
We want a post office here. We plan to allocate to the post office equal to the space they have or more if the post office is interested in that space. We're not sure that it would occupy the same location because in a new conceived center, the ability to have the postal service service, particularly the deliveries that they deal with on a daily basis, would be better organized in a slightly different place than it is today. We want it front and center. We want it very convenient to where people can make convenient trips to the center and particularly the post office. Those are our objectives. The postal service is possibly not the best communicator in dealing with their tenants and landlords. So we expect that the objectives I just stated are the same the postal service has.
Well, you talk about 60 more residential units, which means 60 more post boxes. I mean, I would certainly think it should be a high priority, at least for us.
Agreed. And we would like to be able to accommodate postal boxes and the service that the post office does in the most convenient way possible. So that would be an expansion in our mind.
I was curious how much employee housing is planned in the development?
We have 11,000 square feet. That would be broken down in a way that is best suited to who might want to be here. As you may know, the town has a series of guidelines about how big each of the units might be and how many people would be accommodated. And we'll put together the mix of that 11,000 square feet. I think a good way to think about that would be it's probably on the category of about 14 units if you use their guidelines and standards.
And in terms of density and height, how does this square with what our regulations are? Are we within the height variances that are part of our code? And how is the density in comparison to where our code is?
The Snowmass Land Use Code organizes two important parts. One of those is height and the second is the allocation of equivalent units. That was a system that was devised many decades ago to help understand how future growth could be dealt with. And the way the code deals with that is to allow the town council at their discretion, with a supermajority, to vary height and density. And the anticipation was, when those sections were written, that the council seated at the time will understand and evaluate and make a determination about height. So this proposal does exceed the 38-foot height for a mixed-use district. And in thinking about that, we have looked at what we believe to be the most advantageous massing and density that would be here. We understand and the council has to agree with those overall density and height requests.
And in order to get that agreement from council, there's usually a community purpose that is. What kinds of community purpose are you figuring into this?
Well, we are unique in the sense that local serving commercial is an essential thing of a town. And yet, when you make a comparison to other parts of the resort area, Base Village or the mall, for example, that has a tourism orientation, we fundamentally believe that producing the right services, expanding the area and making this a good place is the number-one communication that we want to talk about as it relates to benefit. The second is this connectivity and transit. We have done an enormous amount by clearing the space, allocating it differently, and putting front and center the transit piece. We have made in our application a statement where an actual cash payment to allow for better pedestrian connections, which may include a bridge or portions of bridge from Base Village. We believe that there are community spaces that could exist within the center when they are identified and have a purpose that will be community benefit. So that's a general outline. Most of that comes at the next stage of the land use approval, but we believe we're well on the road to being able to identify the community benefits that are here.
Okay.
That was my question on one of your previous sketches. It looked like that there was a, with the new transit area, a pedestrian bridge. Would that get everybody off the roads? And would it be an elevated pedestrian bridge across, kind of on the Brush Creek side, across Brush Creek where they're not interfering with the roundabout and all that? Is that where you're headed with the pedestrian bridge?
That's where we're generally heading. I would make the footnote that the pedestrian bridge is not our project. It's a project that the town has studied, they have a number of options that they've looked at. We like that option very much. Why? Because we could get cars off, we can make a walkable place in town, we can connect two of the centers that are commercially oriented. It would be the kind of facility Snowmass has always needed but never been able to realize because of topography. You know, we've got Brush Creek in the center, we've got the road, and now there are parking lots at the base area. So there is a very good physical solution, partly bridge, partly trail, but it's walkable, it would not have ongoing operations with it. It could be a year-round connection and it would work all the time. And so we felt that we could encourage that idea, we would be a great contributor to it, but in the end, it would be the town's project, not the Snowmass Centers.
Okay, we'll take one last question. Did you?
Is it okay?
Yeah.
I just want clarification. In your photograph, you refer to it as a transit center. In the rendering, it appeared as if it was a bus stop that had a cover. It was the same length as a bus. Are we viewing it as a transit center up on, across the road where you can handle all the small buses that come around? Or they're going to have to be stacked up and if one goes, another? Again, is it a single bus stop or is it a true transit center?
Well, it's not the transit center of Base Village. What it is, and we have been working with the transportation director here to size it correctly and to accommodate the kinds of vehicles that are coming. So we have space here that will allow for two buses to be parked simultaneously. So the downhill route, the uphill route would be there, they would occur at the same stop. And by doing that, we would accommodate the loading and loading for all five of the bus routes that come together. Now, the pedestrian amenities that are included are adequate waiting space, covered waiting space that would be weather-protected, seating areas, and walkways that lead from the transit area into the center very directly on the same grade. So think of it as a flattening of the space there. And if you were going back and forth for these services we've been speaking about, you would be able to go straight from the center's main level directly on a flat walking surface to where you could catch buses to any of the neighborhoods where the routes come.
Thank you so much. We're a little over time, so I'm going to cut the questions off. But I appreciate so much your presentation, that was very helpful and thank you very much for coming. At this time, we'd like to move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the status of Snowmass Tourism, an update on the 50th Anniversary Celebration, and a sneak peek at the 2018 Summer Events. And please welcome Rose Abello from the Town of Snowmass Village Tourism to talk about that.
Oh, come on. That's not mine, Travis.
Nope.
No. I'd be happy to pretend I'm Skico though. Well, thank you guys, thank you all for coming here and listening. This is always one of, something I look forward to doing it. I've gotten so many great ideas from the folks at Petraub and that we implement, so please, we're always all ears. And we hope we do more things right than we do wrong, but we certainly don't have all the ideas. So if you have any, let us know. So Deb asked me to go through some things, but I can't help, I'm just going to talk about other things too. So Travis, you want to go? So it snowed six feet in February, right? So Mark, you mentioned earlier that the town plowed 52 inches, the counts up on the hill were more than six feet. I have a question, how many of you, part-time residents, altered your plans because of snow? Did you come later, not come, whatever? A lot of people did. And you know what, our business- A lot of people did, and you know what? Our businesses felt it. I know Marky said that lodging taxes and occupancy actually was pretty good. But restaurants, get out there, support the businesses. They need the help this year. So while you're here, eat early and often, I would say. Go buy some stuff, get some goggles. They could use the help. You know, our taxes were well, but you're going to hear from Andy Gunning, there's a lot of construction materials in that tax number that really doesn't impact the shops on the mall and the retailers. So please give them their support and get out there and ski. It's beautiful. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about house business, a winter update, and then the sneak peek at summer events. And so house business. So we look very closely. We get, you can go to the next slide. We get this document from an organization called Destometrics. We subscribe to it. Aspen subscribes to it, as do fifteen other resorts. Western Ski Area Resorts, oh, not just Western, Destination Ski Area Resorts. And what we do, do you have a little pointer there? No? Okay. All right, so that line in the middle, sort of in the middle, that looks like it's February fifteenth, is February fifteenth. And anything to the left of it is what actually happened. Anything to the right is the bookings, occupancy on the books. So what's interesting here is we have a line that shows us where we finished last year. We have a line that shows where we were year-to-date, year-over-year. And then this purple line, which, all right, here we go. This purple line tells us how we changed from last year. And we use this a lot. The restaurants and retailers look at this all the time. We have a slightly different version of the report we send out. They staff, they buy hamburgers based on this, right? And so we get this a couple times a month. And what you see here is this little peak here. This was our fiftieth anniversary weekend. We initially went into the weekend doubling our occupancy from the prior year, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. This is what happens when Christmas falls on a Monday and schools don't get out till the Friday before. The week before Christmas tanks. It had really little to do with snow at that point because people had already made their Christmas trips. But schools around the country didn't get out till the twenty-fifth, so all the ski resorts felt that little blip. And then we kind of look forward, and this is like where Mardi Gras falls, which is a holiday for a lot of schools. The biggest change that we see here that's coming up is, Marky mentioned, the disabled American veterans. They come in the last Saturday of March. This year, they come in March thirty-first. So you see that big spike in April and the decrease in March because sometimes they come in as late, as like the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth of March, and then you get a bunch of DAV dates in March. We can go to the next slide. So we get this pretty cool thing, too, and this shows us where we stack up against those seventeen other resorts that subscribe to this business. And we are the purple line. Aspen's the red line. We get to see each other because we agree to share our information. We don't know who's who of the other fifteen, and it could be different in different rankings. But Snowmass's occupancy for December was sixth across them. We were number two in January. We're number one in February, number two in March, and number one in April. So our occupancy numbers are super strong, which is great. And this is, again, all of this is as of, this one's as of January thirty-first. We'll get, this report comes out once a month. So we'll get the February twenty-eighth report in about a week. This is a little better than we normally do. We're usually one or two, but we probably have, you know, one-one and three-twos. But we command a pretty high occupancy rate. The next slide, it's the same thing for average daily rate. In the hospitality industry, that's, ADR is a term, right? It's the average daily rate that you get among all your available rooms, not the booked rooms. Just, so if you have a hundred rooms and you only sell one of them, your ADR is going to be very low. So Aspen always ranks super high on that. As you can imagine, they're more expensive than we are. But this is exactly where we lie normally, and I look back about five years. We're always fifth or sixth. April, DAV is a pretty low-rated business, so I think our April is looking down right now because of that DAV shift. But that could go in either way. What this, if you look, dig even deeper, what we're on is a little bit of a cusp of making a change. And, you know, we've got great snow now. We're not finished marketing this season. There's a huge opportunity still to ski and to enjoy it here. But if we get a little loss in occupancy or a little loss in ADR, you know, our positives could flip to negatives. We're right on the edge here. Go to the next one. So let's talk about winters. So Deb asked me to talk a little bit about the fiftieth. And, oh, before that, who has had a smore? Yeah, the smores cart. So this is a new program that Snowmass Tourism is sponsoring. We are offering free smores at both Base Village and the mall every day from three-thirty to four-thirty. We have about eight different flavors. We serve about two to three of them each day. There's the classic. And then upstairs, we had a lot of fun naming some of them. And, but there's pretzels instead of graham crackers. And there's sort of like the cookie, that's the Oreo part, but not the middle. That's, we've got that. There's mint inside. There's peanut butter inside. And they all have standard marshmallows. If you haven't been out there, bring your friends and family. It's a lot of fun. These little carts are, I'm in love with the carts, and I'm in love with the logo on them. So good job to our marketing team. They came from China, so they were a little late, so we started the season without them. But super fun. We've gotten great feedback on them. This one is, the one at the mall is sitting up on the western deck. They've been kind enough to let us use their fire pits, which is great because there's a lot of room up there. And then the one in Base Village is right in front of Base Camp. Three-thirty to four-thirty every day. Go try it. Check it out. So the fiftieth anniversary, I guess I might, okay, so if you have to, oh, here, this is tricky. Yep, click on that.
... in the Rocky Mountains near Aspen, Colorado, at a brand-new ski resort called Snowmass. The name of Snowmass really fits this resort because it's one of the largest resorts in the world.
I think the characters that started this place, the culture they created continues to exist today. It's fun-loving. It's lighthearted.
It's a place where people have that pioneering spirit.
The original community that built this resort, they all were family members. So I think it was built on a foundation of family connection and community.
Bill Jantsch was a frequent visitor to Aspen, and he was an accomplished skier.
He was a person of great fun and spirit, and he probably loved skiing more than did the balance of the business.
We'd heard about just Bill's dreams for a ski area and so forth, and Bill spent a lot of time all over the country looking for a great ski area. And I guess one day in the nineteen-fifties, he said, "My God, I think I found it. It's Snowmass. It's huge."
It's this huge mountain that has everything you could ever want on it, from just mellow groomers to a world-class park and pipe to awesome, more backcountry riding.
Snowmass's sort of alter ego is that it has some of the greatest steep lines in Colorado.
I love it. I celebrate it every day. When I get up and look up over the mountain, I go, wow, I cannot believe I live in this little corner of paradise.
That's just a couple of minutes. There's a full twenty-four, twenty-five-minute piece on our website. You can download it. You can get it on YouTube. It's there. We used the fiftieth anniversary. We took advantage of it to really separate our marketing a bit. We designed one of our ads this year to be about the celebration. We incorporated the logo in all of our ads. And we really then planned this kickoff weekend, and I think if you go to the next, I think, wait, can I? Oh, this is one ad we did. We did a double-page spread in fifty-two eighty, and a hundred of them, actually, that's a golden ticket. That was a stick, a tip-in, and it peeled off, and you could see, check the back and see if you won a ticket to come to Snowmass. You know, hats off to the skiing company to, for agreeing with, you know, and participating and helping this crazy idea. We said, could we, would they offer skiing at six-fifty, the same price it opened at? And they said yes, and we all were like, ooh, is this going to work? Well, it worked really, really well. So well that twelve thousand five hundred tickets were sold, and we had about a hundred and sixty acres of skiing. So, so the Aspen Skiing Company decided a little before that that they would send out to people who had bought the ticket that they, you can use it the last week of April. And the good news is that the people who came up for the weekend, and how many of you were at the weekend? It was, it was a lot of fun. The weather was great. The folks that came up, they came to party. They didn't really care about the skiing. But the good news is we have about eighty-five hundred of those tickets that didn't get redeemed. So those folks, hopefully, and we're going to close the season with a big splash, literally, on closing weekend and invite all those people to come up and really have a great time. If you could go to the, oh, yeah. So the anniversary weekend, we kicked it off. We had that six-fifty lift ticket. We had the gala at the Viceroy that sold out. We could have probably sold out three of those. It was a lot of fun. We did Banana Day, but just singular one, on the Sunday where we had one thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven bananas that we hit around the mountain and let people claim prizes. And I have got to say that this has been a community-wide effort. So many people volunteered. So many people worked hard. I mean, certainly, we worked hard and the ski company worked super hard. There are so many things on the mountain. Somebody was just telling me before how cool the trail signs are that are gold. They're up all year. The Aspen Historical Society is doing a history tour. The Ambassador's is doing a history tour on the mountain. We have all these season-long tie-ins for the fiftieth, and it's just a great way to celebrate. Many restaurants, remember I just mentioned earlier, Go Eat Out, are doing nineteen-dollar-and-sixty-seven-cent-and-fifty-dollar specials, so ask for them. And really just trying to tie it in. And then for closing weekend, we've got quite a bit planned. A lot of the, there's going to be the beach party up at Elk Camp. There'll be, Schneetag is coming back, and we'll have a ski splash up at Spider Savage on Sunday, and it'll just close out this fiftieth season. So we couldn't have done it, I mean, our department kind of spearheaded it, but we couldn't have done it without a ton of volunteers. A lot of help from, every business in the community contributed prizes, for example, for Banana Day. So we were super, super grateful for that. And I hope, you know, our goals were to build business, which we did, have fun, which I did. I don't know if anybody else did. And really just give us a reason to celebrate. And a point of re-engagement, we use this fiftieth as pretty much the main theme of our PR campaign. And Travis, if you could just flip through, Conde Nast Traveler, Los Angeles Times, San Diego, American Way, Travel Pulse, Serendipity, Luxury Magazine, Dejour, Vogue, TV coverage, CNN Travel. I mean, we got Washington Post. We got so much publicity of this, which really made it super fun. USA Today, LA Times, there you go. But that wasn't all we advertised. We are normal Run Away With Me campaign. Some of you may be familiar with it. We've been doing Run Away With Me for two winters, and this will be the third summer that we're doing it. And we're doing Run Away With Me. It's all based on this concept of our, what we call our brand platform, is, which is that we bring you closer to nature, we're embraced by nature, and that's the platform we have. So we've got, you know, this kind of ad is running, and if you go to the next slide, there's a bunch of digital executions of it. We really try to hammer down some of our key messages like Gate to Gondola in thirty minutes because not a lot of people. And we do that in our direct-fly markets, and, you know, this, Would You Celebrate With Me geared to the fiftieth. But lots of super highly-targeted winter, you know, this spring break got a different type of town line. Kind of fun. We like to have fun. And digital, social media, all sorts of different executions. But you guys are in for a treat, I think, because we, I mentioned that this campaign has been in-market, and we thought that now is the time for next winter to do a new campaign, a new winter campaign. And it is based on the, our Embraced by Nature platform. I may have told you guys when I visited with you maybe a year and a half ago or two years ago that we did a pretty extensive input session with the community about what makes us special and what is our unique selling proposition. And this Embraced by Nature platform, and our brand values are on exploration and joy and connectedness, and that we're genuine and soulful, really resonate. So that's the basis of it. And because I can, and she does a far better job at this than I did, I invited Virginia McNallys, who's our marketing director, whose baby this is, to present to you guys the sneak peek of our new campaign. So we're shooting this now for next winter. It'll roll out starting in September. And nothing you see is final, but it'll give you a sense of it, and I think Virginia and her team have done a great job, so I wanted her to have a chance.
Do you have a speaking of the mic?
I will do.
Thank you.
Can I click?
I don't, no.
No.
I don't think it's clicking. I think Travis is clicking. Go ahead and click, Travis.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting me come, Rose. It's fun to show this to you guys. As Rose mentioned, this is still really in its early stages. You know, we've put together the campaign concept, and now we really need to buff it out. So as Rose mentioned, focusing on our brand platform, Embraced by Nature, but expressing it in a different way than Run Away With Me is, of course, top priority. Another key priority for us is to stand out from the crowd. What we have seen by looking at the competition is that everybody has blue skies, gorgeous runs, amazing views, happy skiers. And we love our peaks and our skiers and our blue skies the most, but they look pretty same-same when you start getting into the media space. So here's Jackson Hole. You can show us the next. We've got, Alta has a lot of happy skiers and blue skies and pretty views. Yep, but they like yellow. And then Park City likes orange, but they've still got, you know, happy skiers and blue skies, so we'll stay here for a second. So what we wanted to do was take a little bit of a risk, do something a little bit different so that we could stand out. And, you know, if you're flipping through the pages of Outside Magazine or you're looking in the Colorado Official State Vacation Guide, we have to have a little bit of stopping power. So we know that what we want to communicate is that the nature of Snowmass reflects your own true nature. It uncovers an amazing side of yourself that is happier, braver, and always up for a little adventure. So the way that we've decided to do this is meet your outside side. And so as you see, these are really rough comps, so the, you know, the people are not final and the visuals are not, you know, fully dialed in. But these are, these are the grand ideas. So let's take a look at the next. So, gosh, where can I read this? All right. This is called our Brand Manifesto. This is our fancy agency word for, oh, thank you. For, these are, these are our words of inspiration. These are not ad words. This is not ad copy. But I would love to read this, too, because I think this really encapsulates the whole thing. So there is someone I'd like you to meet, another side of you that's been patiently waiting for their chance to shine, the one that howls at the moon, tangos with the wind, and doesn't care what time it is. Say hello to your outside side, the you that laughs harder, breathes deeper, and doesn't know what an inside voice is. The side of you that nature calls forth as an impartial observer, watching you without judgment and distilling you to your truest self. You are more than who you think you are, and nature knows. It knows how much more of you you could be. So hush up, inside side. It's outside side's turn now, and it is long overdue. Be joyous, wild, and free. Be who you've always wanted to be. In Snowmass, come face-to-face with who you can become. Meet your outside side in Snowmass. So that's long and poetic and beautiful, but of course, we'd never run that in an ad, but I love the concept and what it tells us. One thing I'll just have you know, as you see these, I'm going to, we'll flip you through a few characters. But as you see them, see his, in his glasses, you see a reflection there. So we're going to show real-life photos of actual places in Snowmass, and so he'll be reflecting, you know, where he is. Since we're using these semi-fabricated scenarios, I mean, it's our actual mountains and backgrounds and texture. He's built out of textures that are true to life here. But those glasses and goggles that you'll see in the different characters give us a chance to show the real place. So we can flip through a few here. Your outside side goes off the deep end and lands. Your outside side, can I flip? Thank you, has a single-track mind. His outside side doesn't have a bedtime. Your outside side sings off-key on mountain. So here, we're getting into summer, showing the concert series. Your outside side seeks the bumpiest way home. So what you're seeing here is just a concept for a video treatment where we, we meet the character. We zoom into her goggles. If you notice, you're zooming into the goggles and you're coming right into the real scene of someone skiing powder. You're going to a kind of a point-of-view shot, and then you're backing out and seeing the beautiful scenics. So it's a nice way for us to play with the imagined and the created scene that we start with and bringing it true to life. So this is our cast of characters. Now, keep in mind, these are really, these are rough comps, and so these are just the ideas of who we want to be able to show. We want to show a little bit more ethnic diversity than you're seeing right here. We definitely want to show diversity in terms of age and interest. Not everybody has to be a badass skier. Some people can, you know, it's more about nature. Oh. Come on, we can be a little badass in Snowmass. And then, you know, the music side of it, the kids, you know, the kid is really meant to speak to the parents of the kid. So we feel like we get a lot of different messages covered here, a lot of opportunities to speak to what people really want when they travel, which are great experiences, the opportunity to connect with nature, you know, and something just a little bit more imaginative. So as Rose mentioned, we're shooting this now. I'm so glad it finally snowed, because now we can get beautiful shots. We'll shoot the cast of characters, we'll shoot fresh people that really reflect the kinds of people that we wanna show. And then we'll go into development mode, and it will launch at the end of the summer to promote Winter and Beyond. So, this summer, you won't see any of this, we'll stay with the Run Away With Me campaign. And then, and we have all kinds of fun ideas for how to roll this out, you know, could we do something on our website where you can create your own outside-side character and you can put all these cool things on yourself? And so, there, I think there are a lot of great possibilities, and with a really awesome creative agency and, you know, a team who is excited about it, I think that we have some fun opportunities to just set ourselves apart a little bit.
Thank you, thanks so much.
See, she does such a good job at that, right? She's really done an awesome job managing the agency. And we have shared this now with our marketing board, we've shared it with our marketing advisory committee, we've shared it with a few people, and, you know, everybody who's a marketer in this business is like, wow, you're gonna stop and look, you're gonna, you wanna see what that is. So, we're super excited about it, so thank you, Virginia, for your leadership on that. How much time do I have? I don't? Oh, right, well, there you go, we have summer coming up, it's gonna be great. I, well, one second, Joanne, I'll get you in a second. So, in fear of doing that, I have brought a sneak peek of our summer schedule. So, you may all take one of these home, but for those of you at home already, go to snowmass.com, events, everything that we know is loaded in here. We've got Tough Mudder coming back, the car race is coming back, the Heritage Fire is back, everybody wants to know this. Ten concerts, ten consecutive Thursdays, Thursdays, did I say they were on Thursdays? Plus two Saturdays. So, it's ten consecutive Thursdays plus two Saturdays. The rodeo, we will have our Fourth of July celebration, some of you may have come last year, we're gonna expand that. And the rodeo will happen on the Fourth of July, they're probably gonna move their time a little earlier. So, make sure to grab one of these, and because we like to send people home, we also brought some of the 50th Anniversary Coasters, so make sure to grab a couple of those, Virginia will put them out in the back. And it's pretty daytime, right? Or no, no Q and A?
Any questions?
One quick question, wonderful presentation, Rose. I'm wondering if tourism keeps numbers for the Easter weekend on occupancy? And I was thinking, Easter is the last weekend of March this year. We were here, and I rode the lift up with many amazing Latinos. And Semana Santa, Easter week, is such a big deal. So, I'm wondering if that's something that the department has thought about?
Yeah, absolutely, that's a great question. And, you know, Easter is complicated for us. We've seen in the last few years that there's been a decline in that last two weeks of March. And so, this year with Easter, so the biggest shift, so we do keep track of occupancy, that's one of the first things that showed, right? Is, the biggest shift is that Disabled American Veterans shift to coming in on March 31st kinda messes it up a little bit. We have done quite, we have a, and see, Virginia's gonna probably be like, you should've kept it in. We had a whole thing, all the stuff we're doing to Blitz March, because March is particularly soft this year. I believe it has to do a little bit with people waiting for snow. I heard anecdotally today at a meeting that I had with some of the lodging community that their March bookings are really picking up now, which is great to hear. But we have, we don't market that much, Snowmass Tourism doesn't market internationally. Aspen Skiing Company spearheads something called the International Alliance, which, it's maybe a little technical, it's sort of a pay-to-play, the lodges who want that kind of business pool their resources and go on trips and stuff, and they've got a whole promotional perspective for Semana Santa, that's out in the marketplace. But it's not tourism-led, we don't really spend much, many resources internationally.
Great. Thank you very much, Rose, and we really enjoyed that, that was so informative. Now, I'd like to move on to our next speaker from East West Partners to give us a base village construction update, and that's Andy Gunyon, thank you for being here, Andy.
I'll pull this one out?
Yeah, that's your mouse.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Does this clicker work?
Yeah, I think so.
So far, so good, yeah. Thanks for having me again, I think the last time I was here was mid-summer, is that right? So, I was trying to, I was putting this together, trying to think what has changed since I was last here, so I don't bore you with the complete history again, but I have some history in here, but we've made great progress since summer. You've probably seen a lot of the activity going on out there. So, the current phase, well, got slides out, sorry. So, we, one of the things we've done is kinda fully-built out our team here. So, we've got a really strong local team, they're all based here. Some of the accountants are based in Avon, our headquarters, but most everybody is here, located in the Roaring Fork Valley now, which is terrific. Also have a really good sales team on-site now that are dedicated just to this project. And we've finished our office in Base Village, which is in Capital Peak 2C. So, if you wanna stop by and check us out, we're, doors are always open. And then, just up towards the ski slope, we have our sales gallery open in the space that used to be Generation Snowmass. So, we've got a full-scale model of the village, you can see in the lower-left-hand corner, that's super helpful to see and get the perspectives on how, how the whole thing comes together. And this is also where our sales team is, is based, we also have a full video wall, and just got our virtual reality goggles going, which is really cool for touring residents and whatnot. So, current phase, just to remind everybody, is basically Lot Two and Lot Three. So, Lot One is fully completed with Hayden Lodge, Capital Peak, Elk Camp, Gondola, and the barn buildings. Limelight is Building Five, that's the one that's most advanced at this point. And then, Building Four AB, Six, and the ice skating rink are all under construction as well, and I'll show you some pictures of those. And then, Seven and Eight, we kinda just started on in the last few weeks here. One of the other things we've done over the summer, probably since the last time we got together, was did some amenity refresh in the Viceroy Hotel. So, we put a new coffee shop in the lobby, which is really cool, came out very nice. And we redid the lobby itself. We also reconcepted the restaurant in there, it used to be Eight K, it's now Toro, which is a concept with Richard Sandoval. We've worked with Richard in other locations, so it's a Latin menu, but it's not all spicy food, there's a lot of good variety on it. So, so far, so good with that. And we also redid the fitness center in Viceroy. And then, the offseason here, between ski season and summer, we're gonna be adding some hot tubs to the pool out there, as well as putting a new pool bar in. Because when we redid the fitness center, we put it where the Nest Restaurant used to be, if you guys ever ate in there. So, we're, we're gonna rebuild Nest essentially, but it's gonna be an outdoor dining experience now. So, this is just to zoom in on that current phase we looked at a second ago. I'll just run through these components real quick with an update on each one. So, the Plaza, the Plaza will be kinda the last piece to come together before next ski season. It's, most of the infrastructure has been put in already, but the finishing touches and everything won't go in until fall. But I think you guys have seen images of that before, it's just another aerial view of that, Building Six and One Snowmass in the background. Summer scene of the Plaza, and we are gonna be using AstroTurf in the summer, we've seen that done in other places successfully. And then, in the summer, the children's fountain there at the bottom will open up, which should be a nice amenity for kids in the summer. So, this is a shot just from kinda hovering over the Limelight. Building Six is on your right, Building Four is on your left, and that middle section is what the Plaza, the ice skating rink will be. The community building, Building Six, you saw is well underway. Town Council and town staff, and we're, we're helping them as well, but I'm still trying to figure out exactly what's going in here, right? And one of the lead groups is this Nexus Group, that's a collaboration of several local nonprofits. And so, I think Council's still in the process of evaluating that, and if they want that to be the use, or if it's gonna be something else. So, we are concerned at this point that come next ski season, if anything, will be open in here. The building will be done from a corn shell standpoint, but the timeframe is getting very tight to actually have something open for next ski season. We're hoping we can, with the town, advance the food and beverage component in this building, and perhaps at least have that open for next ski season if nothing else. And again, that, that image on the lower-left there is Building Six, you can see the structure going up there. Limelight, just to refresh your memory, is ninety-nine hotel rooms, eleven residences. We did go to Market with those eleven residences back in January. And we've sold six of those eleven so far, so a great start. And also has a mountain club component that SkiCo's gonna own and manage, and they've launched sales on that mountain club for memberships now. So, I think you've seen these images before, so I'll just breeze through them, but just some digital renderings of the Limelight, the lobby, the lounge, again, live music, similar experience to the Limelight in Aspen, the bar, mountain club lounge, and the guest rooms. And then, the residences are mainly on the fifth floor and also running down the western facade. This is kinda the penthouse unit, which we've sold, Unit 517, but great volume, great views, contemporary finishes, but still pretty mountain in terms of materiality. I won't bore you with the virtual tour of it. So, this is a picture of the Limelight from basically the Elk Camp Gondola. And that steel structure you see on the right there is gonna be the new ski corral. So, right now, SkiCo stages the, the place where you can store all your skis, just kinda out in front of the Gondola and that, that facility will become that once it's complete. But you can see the Limelight was topped out over the summer, we've got it wrapped so that work can be going on on the exterior facade and the interior. And then, Lumen is what used to be called Building Four, so Limelight's on the right, Lumen's there. And again, just three residences in here, and a four mountain sport's on the ground floor. Some renderings of the interior of the penthouse there in Lumen. And this is an overhead shot of Lumen. So, we, we're basically working on the third-floor framing of that building now. And then, One Snowmass is what is formerly Building Seven on the right and Eight on the left. Parking garage entrance is in the middle there. And so, we just received a demolition permit after we got the PUD Amendment passed. So, we're, we're basically doing demolition work on Building Seven right now. You can see the crane that's been set up out front, that's starting to, to help with the work. We're working on getting the full building permit, we have to finalize some PUD agreements first, which we're hoping to do in the next couple of weeks here. But this project has forty-one residences, five retail spaces, which was the primary purpose of that PUD Amendment, was to get those additional commercial spaces in. Still has the medical clinic, which is located down on the far wing of Building Eight there. And then, the Arrival Center will be preserved and actually made into a double-height space now. So, what you, what you've been experiencing in the Arrival Center has all been temporary. So, a view of Building Seven from the Plaza, from kinda Building Six. It's an image of the penthouse in One Snowmass. So, again, a lot of the design is contemporary. This is an overhead shot, so not a whole lot has changed at this point, but what you're seeing there in the middle is Building Seven. And again, they're working on demolishing the existing structures, 'cause those existing structures were just temporary, put in until the project restarted. And then, Building Eight's on the lower-right there. And so, our estimated completion for One Snowmass is fall of 2019. Building Seven should be done before Building Eight, the way they're sequencing. And I should've mentioned it, but the Limelight, Lumen, Building Six, and Ice Skating Rink are all scheduled to be done by November first of this year. So, this is kind of, give or take, a year afterwards. Our contractors on these projects, so Ari Nelson is doing Limelight, Lumen, Plaza, and Building Six, and Hazelton's gonna be our, or is our contractor on Building Seven and Eight. And just to refresh everyone's memory, we basically started construction in earnest in May. There was some stuff, work going on down in the garage before just preparation work, but last May, the site pretty much looked like this. So, we've made a lot of, a lot of progress, I guess it's a little more than nine months now, but it's been fast and furious, but I think we're on track. It's a very tight schedule for November, but we're, we're working hard to get it done. These are just several overhead shots. So, there, you can see kinda the skeleton frame of Building Six in the foreground, Limelight on the left, Lumen in the back. And a shot from here, basically, with the crane that just was put up for One Snowmass. That is all I had.
Do we have any questions for Andy? Seeing none, I thank you so much, that looks great, thank you. And for our last speaker, we have, from SkiCo, Rich Berkley, to give us an update on the Snowmass Summer Mountain Activities, including Elk Camp. Welcome, Rich.
Thank you, guys, for having me, and I'm gonna do a little bit more than that. I wasn't given an agenda, so I was gonna start globally and then work from Aspen to Snowmass. Snowmass having by far the most projects, if that's okay. And am I clicking?
You're gonna click in a second.
So, I'm Rich Berkley, I'm Vice President of Strategy and Planning for Aspen Skiing Company, but for the last fifteen years, I did mountain operations across the four mountains. I work closely with Steve Sewell on a daily basis as well. So, to start with, I wanted to focus on the Icon Pass, which was just announced about two weeks ago. And this is an Altera Resorts product with twenty-six resorts nationwide, of which Aspen Snowmass has two products, a seven-day and a five-day. So, every one of these passes will have, across our four mountains, seven or five. We certainly hope that we notice a dramatic increase in business due to this pass. And we were talking about marketing, this one will, they're not sure how many they're gonna sell, but let's assume it's in excess of three-hundred thousand passes in North America, it gives access to it. And I don't know where you guys are from, but if you're in an area that has a ski resort nearby, California, Los Angeles, for instance, if you ski mammoth a lot, this might be an ideal pass as a second homeowner in Snowmass as well. So, the passes are listed, as I said, twenty-six resorts, I won't cover them, but there are unlimited at Altera Resorts, which is fourteen resorts, and then the remainder, there's, there's seven or a five-day. And this pass will modify each season, but this is in year one what it will look like. Aspen Mountain, we just had a master plan accepted by the Forest Service, and we've submitted two projects in that. There is multiple components to it, if anyone would like to know more about it, I'm happy to take the time after this presentation, but I wanted to focus on the two projects that we're gonna start doing as soon as 2019, so it'll be a study period through 2018. The first is Pandora's Expansion, this is actually expanding the operational boundary of Aspen Mountain by a hundred and sixty acres, and a new lift in the Pandora side, this is on the east side of the mountain. And as you're standing at the Sun Deck, which is that building at the top of this picture, it's down to the east and to your right. So, to the right of Walsh's, if you skied Aspen Mountain. And that, we hope to have approvals to begin building it in 2019. The other thing is snowmaking to the summit of Aspen Mountain. And so, right now, snowmaking goes roughly three-quarters of the way up, and we're, without natural snowfall, we're unable to open that mountain top to bottom. This would give us a better chance of an early opening, or a better chance of a Thanksgiving top to bottom. Aspen Highlands, a very few big projects, but a lot of little ones that may impact you, and I picked the ones that are most likely to, that you have the biggest chance of running into you. The first is that there may be a new lift on Golden Horn for AVSC, and this would be a surface lift. When we are open and the lift is open, it will be open to the public, but really, it's primarily for race training for the ski club. The second thing is that we're gonna put a parking gate in at the Highlands parking structure. This is primarily for summer use, but it'll be operated year-round, and that there'll be a control access on a twenty-four-hour basis for the Highlands parking structure. If you guys go to the Maroon Bells, for instance, a lot of times this year, the parking structure was full and the line of cars went down Maroon Creek, and we hope to prevent that in the future. And the last one is expand the bathrooms at the Patrol Headquarters at the top of Loge. And if you had, if any of you waited in line, specifically women, last, on busy days, we have ten or twelve deep, and we will triple the capacity for that particular bathroom. Moving to Buttermilk, this is for your kids, Fort Frog burned down two years ago during the, at the end of the season, and we are now gonna replace it. We have, the Architectural Group, Z Group, has created a very compelling fort for kids. And it'll have all sorts of features, dungeon, rope ridge, there's a climbing wall, there is, it's still on the Old West theme of Fort Frog, but this shit will be built in the, this summer, 2018. Now, we move to Snowmass, and Snowmass has the most projects. I'm gonna cover some- I'm gonna cover some that finished up late last fall, and then the one, the future projects for this summer. So the first was the Tree Line Trail. This is our challenge course, it's near Rayburn's Pond. It did not open last year, but it will open this year, June 22nd. And this is an obstacle course, and you are actually harnessed and locked into a belay system. I was kind of dubious when I was like, yeah, okay, obstacle course, that's great, little kids. I have not been able to complete this obstacle courses yet, so far. So it's very challenging, there's five levels, and we'll run the programs through the ski school. The Breathtaker, we opened this on December 22nd. Thankfully, we did not, we had an offer, activity up at Elk Camp. The Alpine Slide is what this is, and it's been extremely popular, and gives families another activity on the mountain, especially in a year when we had very little snow opening season. This is what it looks like, this is my picture, so it's not very good, but about a month and a half ago, I took this, and it's very, extremely exciting. It's a little different than other Alpine Slides in that this one goes through the trees, it's hard to see from Elk Camp, and I know if you've been up there, you can see it, but it's not front and center. And it gives you, all the activities that we've designed are more mountain-based and more nature-based than other resorts. And so we still focus on that, even though they may be not quite, you know, gravity-based sports, although this one is gravity-based. Future activities. We have, our master plan from 2015 has the ability to expand hiking trails, and that will become a focus in the next few years, including a trail that goes cross-mountain. We're looking at one that may even go above Tree Line through the Cirque and come down. So that would be a much more significant trail than we have in the past. But we will continue to push and submit projects with the Forest Service for expanded hiking. I also, today, just got done meeting with the Picken County, and the Upper Roaring Fork Valley Trails System, I think it's some very long acronym, has a proposal for several trails that impact Snowmass, and some of them go through the Snowmass ski area as well. So they're, they're a separate organization, the thing, and then Rose has the, Town of Snowmass Village has their own trails department, so I think that from a hiking perspective, you'll see expanded trail systems soon. We will continue to expand our downhill and cross-country biking trails as well, in conjunction with that. We've been focusing on those to a greater degree in the past few years, because we're trying to build a critical mass for the biking trails for lift service, so that you can actually make a destination visit here for a bike vacation. And finally, we have, we're gonna open several gathering spots, we're calling them, they're event platforms. One will be at Rayburn's Pond, where we have the challenge course, and one is at the top of Elk Camp. And these serve as a function for the new Base Village as well. So for instance, we don't call them, you know, wedding platforms, but these would be great places to have a wedding, or to have a corporate party that are on the mountain. They're very primitive, but they serve a function, especially in summer, for activities and giving, you know, the hotels a place to host an event. And then Andy covered this so thoroughly that I don't wanna, I didn't want to neglect mentioning that the Limelight is on track. I believe today, we are starting to sell, is that right? Or is it certainly within the next week or two, which means that the contractors are comfortable enough that this project will open. It's scheduled to open by Thanksgiving of this year, and that project is moving forward. And that is what I have, but I'm happy to answer. Siggen?
I forgot the zip line.
I did not mention the zip line.
I forgot the zip line.
Didn't I put it in there? I had it in there.
Nope.
Oh, I did. Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot. A complete activity. We have a canopy tour, which is a zip line, that's a harnessed event, and a guided experience, where you will, we have a seven-station zip line, where you actually slide on a belay system between towers in the trees. It's primarily based on existing and living trees, with a few rappels, that we will start, again, June 22nd this year, and that is a program that we're offering as well. And I'm Rose, I apologize. You're right, I did leave out the major one.
Where is Rayburn's Pond?
So as you're at the Elk Camp Restaurant, there's that magic, the surface lift, the covered surface lift, it's up that to the right. So it's on Turkey Trot, Turkey Trot is the run that goes right by it.
One on the left, when you're...
Left on Turkey Trot, correct, if that's the easiest way to describe it.
Where's the zip line?
It starts, it goes right through there, it starts right below that to the north or to the downhill side of that. Yeah, so you walk to it from the restaurant, you'll be harnessed, and then there's a guide that will clip you in, you're on a belay system that you can't unclip, they, only they can unclip it. And then they slide you across, you have towers and rope bridges, and then two belays in the middle of it, seven stations, about a two-and-a-half-hour experience, and then you rappel down 80 feet directly to a cabin that's built at Slider, and then we retire, transport you back to your site.
Is this presentation available online?
I can make it, and I'm gonna add the zip line, though, before I send it out. I'd be happy to. Yeah, I, I had, like you said, I limited agenda for Aspen for what you guys wanted to see, so if you wanted, if this is something that you wanna do, I'd like to... Absolutely. Yeah, I don't know, Rose, the easiest way is probably to get in touch with you, and I'll, I'll send it to you. Yeah, definitely wanna make sure that I correct the zip line omission.
I don't know if you can do anything about this, but when we've been up there hiking, rabbit-running around there, and the areas where you're having your new activities, the mosquito problem is horrendous.
Very bad.
Very, very bad.
Really? Okay. The mosquito.
Mosquito.
Is this, is this a new thing, or has this always been the case?
No.
It's been a couple years, in the summer.
Really? Okay. I don't know if I can do anything, but this is the first I'm hearing of it, and I certainly can look into it. It's so dry up there, I can't imagine, I'm, yeah, we have the pond, but...
Oh, the pond, for sure.
Let me, let me put it on the list of things to do. We certainly can do some things, I'm not sure what the Forest Service will allow, but if that's an issue, we can, we can certainly follow up with it.
That's the...
Is your motivation on these hiking trails to make it strictly hiking and no bike traffic?
For the hiking trails? Absolutely. Yeah, I like the segregated activities, and we have enough acreage that we can be all, all things to all people. So we have the concentrated activities with the zip line, canopy tour, and Alpine Coaster in one really very small area of 12 acres. And then the biking trails are all on the east side, and the hiking trails intermix with the east side, and then we'll go to the west side, including some cross-mountain trails. Yeah, so keeping the two activities separate is certainly a goal. Yes.
At one time, there was talk of some type of construction at the top of Elk Camp Lift, a platform and/or signage, is, is there a schedule for that?
Yeah, the, that, the event space that I spoke of is going to be there. I don't believe it's gonna be a deck, it's gonna be a space. The Forest Service was fairly limited there, but it, it's, no flagstone, it's gonna be a natural surface, but it will be built in such a way that you could bring in chairs, host an event there, and with those amazing views up there, we certainly would anticipate activity. They wouldn't, we were trying to do, we hope to have a trail to the top of Burnt Mountain with a viewing platform, but that would not be, a viewing area, but that would not be available for events. In the next 20 years? So, so, yeah, that will be, these platforms. So our master plan was accepted, the project letters for those two components are in right now. The next thing that we'll also add this summer will be a climbing wall, and that should open by, but you should see the event platforms in three to five years, and then we'll have a continual build-out of the trails over the next several years. Yeah, the master plans last roughly 20 years, so I just, we just got the one for Aspen done. This one's from 2015, and we'll implement it. And it also is volume-based. We have a lot of activity going on at Snowmass. In fact, probably the most activity on the western slope of Colorado right now. We're, I'd like to see how things shake out from the mountain perspective, to make sure that we maintain the experience and capitalize on all of our beautiful assets.
Is the Icon Pass in place of the Mountain Collective, or do they complement?
At this point, they're separate products. But at some point, the Mountain Collective may not exist as a product, because you wouldn't need it, it's, it's covered under the Icon Pass. Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Rich. And thank you, everyone, for coming. Again, if you haven't signed up, please sign up for the part-time residence email distribution list, which is, there's a clipboard in the back. We also look forward to seeing everyone in the summer for the next meeting. Happy skiing until then. Thank you.